Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, May 11th, 2021. We'll call the meeting to order.
Gary, I think we're waiting for... Hang on a second. For Mary.
Oh.
Oh, looks like she's coming on board here. There she is. I don't have any additions or corrections for the agenda tonight.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second? Motion by Chad, second by Brandon, to approve the agenda. Roll call, Chad.
Aye.
Dave.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Invocations from Oak Heights Covenant Church.
May I remove my mask?
Yes, you can. So, you.
Mayor and council members, as an active member of the Hutchinson Ecumenical Ministerial Association, I want to thank you for the opportunity and openness of supporting various expressions of faith represented within our community to offer this time of prayer. At Oak Heights Covenant Church, we uphold the city and you as leaders in our regular prayers, and I'm grateful to share this prayer in your presence today. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, this evening, I pray for your gift of wisdom and unity and peace to be poured out upon our city council members. May they graciously hear each item that is before them today and make clear decisions that will continue to assist the community in its growth. May Hutchinson continue to be a city where families make their home, where children can learn and play and grow in safety, where people in whatever stage of life, may they find care and compassion, and where all people thrive. As we are fully into the spring season, I pray for the farm fields around our community, that they will brim with a supply of abundance this fall for both the farmer and consumer. As we are still in the season of COVID, may our leaders be guided to the best decisions that provide safety in a desire of people to return to a former way of living in community. I pray for wisdom of our cities, uh, citizens to live peaceably within those decisions. May the city of Hutchinson be a shining light of unity to the communities around us. Now, Lord, bless each council member as they carry out their work. I pray for Brandon, Mary, Chad, Dave, and our mayor, Gary. May they have a sense of satisfaction in the work that will be accomplished here tonight. Pray this in thy gracious name. Amen.
Thank you very much. Uh, pledge of allegiance. Uh, Dave, you want to do the honors again?
My pleasure.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All righty, um, recognitions of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anyone have anything tonight? All righty, we do have a resolution underneath there. We have resolution number 15308. Resolution accepting $70 donation from Roger and Mary Meese for the law enforcement memorial park fund.
Make a motion to accept that donation.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to up... Accept the donations from, from Roger and Mary Meese. Uh, roll call, Chad.
Aye.
Dave.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
Mary. Aye. Motion carries. Public comment, citizens addressing the council. Do we have anybody that wants to address the council map?
Yes, we do. Come up and state your name, address for the record.
Hi, my name is Mariah Rolston-Derrigan. I live in Hutchinson. I've lived in Hutchinson for seven years now. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm here regarding comments made at the last city council meeting and the recently proposed mask resolution requiring all council members to wear a mask when attending council functions or to plan to attend meetings remotely. While I'm sure Councilman Sebaston has spoken to a fair amount of Hutchinson citizens that want the mask mandate to be over, I hope he must have also heard from those of us who wish we will all continue adapting to these health measures in order to show care for those who are immunocompromised and vulnerable. Additionally, when Councilman Begno said last meeting that people shouldn't be harassed for not following the masking mandate, I get very anxious quickly when I consider our community continuing down that path. If we can all stick with these temporary measures, we will continue to slow the spread of a virus that has thus far caused serious damage and death. It won't be helpful if I even attempt to address some of the misinformation I've heard and read lately. Instead, I wanted to give a window into my personal experience with COVID and also the experience of some friends and family. A former high school classmate and fellow Alto choir mate of mine in North Dakota has had COVID twice, most recently in April 2021. She is now dealing with COVID laryngitis, she's expecting a baby, and she has completely lost her voice after months of dealing with COVID complications. She is using a text-to-voice app on her phone to communicate better with her children. She's in her 30s. Another high school classmate and friend of mine in North Dakota had a condition called primary sclerosis colitis, PSC, Walter-Patton's disease, and he was receiving chemo treatments for bile duct cancer associated with the PSC since 2019. Things went downhill after he contracted COVID in August 2020. He had two stays in the COVID unit, which were really rough psychologically, no visitors, and complete isolation. His wife had usually been with him around the clock. He had increasing confusion and memory lapses due to chemo and COVID. He sometimes didn't understand why he was there alone. He passed away in September 2020. He was 32. My father-in-law contracted COVID during the surge that happened in Hutchinson last fall. My husband and I hadn't been over to his house often since the beginning of all this because we were trying to socially distance and not expose him to any virus we may have come across in the community. We have since found out that he had flu-like symptoms for two weeks or so, but he thought it was a cold. He told me on the phone the evening of November 7th that his wife had tested positive for COVID. He hadn't gotten his test back yet, but that he probably had it. It will remain one of the greatest regrets of my life, that I didn't ask more questions, that I didn't push him further when he said he felt okay. I think in my mind, in November 2020, after almost nine months of COVID measures, even after hearing him coughing and he had to hand the phone over to his wife, I still wasn't taking COVID seriously enough. I just took him for his word that he was okay. He died in the middle of the night on November 8th from respiratory failure due to COVID-19. He was 73. About three weeks after I spoke about his death at the November 10th, 2020 city council meeting, my husband and I and several members of his family also contracted COVID. My husband and I were both extremely ill with painful chest coughs, fever, chills, muscle aches, congestion, runny nose, extreme fatigue, headache, and in his case, nausea and vomiting. This was really scary because my husband is diabetic and wasn't able to stomach his medications. That situation was only alleviated through prescription anti-nausea medication. He started to dread the evening time because that's when his fever and nausea would set in. We were taking aspirin every day, and still do, to avoid blood clots, um, many have experienced during and after COVID. I remember we both slept on our sides because we were told that's the best thing for your lungs. We said we would wake each other up if we felt short of breath, or were struggling, or felt we needed to go to the emergency room, or even if we were just scared. A family member who was a nurse used her HSA money to order all of the family members who are sick pulse oximeters so we could check that our oxygen levels were at least at 95%. Friends dropped off food on our front steps. We had conference calls with family where we all played Animal Crossing or just watched each other play to take our minds off of everything. Finally, after two weeks of sleeping at least 12 hours every night, we finally started to feel an upswing. Bottom line, we were both actually mild cases. Some friends of ours in Hutchinson just lost their father after he was exposed to COVID by his nursing staff. The family is still struggling with this loss. They were planning to be here tonight, but they were unable to. And they are frequently told by others in the community that this wasn't a COVID death because their father had cancer. The last thing their dad said as he was gasping for air was "Do what you gotta do," when he was asked if he wanted to be intubated. He contracted COVID because someone didn't bother to put their mask on correctly. The family is fairly sure they know who it was, and they hope to get answers someday. From our friends, we are sick of hearing that masks don't work. We'd rather wear a mask and find out it was for nothing than not wear one and find out it would have saved a life because one life affects so many others. Today, I'm thankful to be fully vaccinated. I want to have faith that we in Minnesota will continue to become vaccinated, and we will continue to follow health guidelines to stop the spread of this virus until we reach herd immunity. We will get there, but we're not there yet. Please don't stop fighting for each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, is there anybody else, Matt, that wants to address the council?
Nope. No question.
All righty, we have, uh, regular meeting minutes of April 27th, 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second that.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary. I'm sorry. Motion by Mary, second by Chad to approve the minutes. Roll call, Mary.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
Dave.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, uh, consent agenda, this will be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. A is approval of sale of airport hangar 1790. B is the approval of the 2021 pavement repairs. C is approval of the 2021 concrete repairs. D is approval of the Minnesota Pottery Festival event. E is reappointment of Mary Hoffman and Diane Wanzet to the Hutchinson Library Board to April of 2024. And F is claims appropriation and contract payments. Is there anything anybody wants pulled off? Entertainer motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second that.
Motion by Chad, second by Brandon to approve the consent agenda. Roll call, Mary.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
Dave.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Matt, can we skip ahead to the Parks and Recreation year-end report?
Yep, we've got 15 minutes, um, until our public hearing, so we'll ask Lynn with her first big objective of giving her report in 15 minutes, so I'll ask.
Did you tell Lynn there will be a test on it too afterwards?
He put the report together, so.
All right. Lynn, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I will report on the 2020 Parks Rec Community Education Annual Report, which I was not here to be a part of. So if you have questions, I will have to, uh, get back to you on those. Do you have the...
Yep.
All right, so our Parks Recreation and Community Education, um, annual report. So, um, with every year, we put out three different brochures that had all of the information and different things going on in our department. The winter-spring, um, 2020 went off as normal to all of the, um, residents in Hutchinson. And then with the COVID guidelines and restrictions, the summer 2020 and the fall 2020 brochures all went to a digital format due to the unknowns of the COVID-19 virus and the restrictions that were ever changing. But we still did, um, put out three different brochures, and the information was ongoing updating, uh, via the website and our social media to keep citizens up to date on things happening in our department. Parks and Natural Resources, um, so this is just a graph showing, um, the nature of what our parks and our perks side of things does. Kind of just gives you an indication of their, um, hours and kind of the majority of where, where those things go to. Um, a big part of it is general maintenance, um, and then mowing is also a big part of it, equipment maintenance, um, winter functions, athletic fields, natural resources, forestry, um, and then administrative trainings and meetings. But the majority of it is general maintenance that they, um, pursue. And then just so people are aware, our Parks Department also takes care of, um, the district, uh, grounds. And so there's a chart that shows the hours that they spend taking care of those facilities within the school district, and then also Hutchinson Utilities, um, mowing and landscaping and maintenance and forestry at their facilities. And then a majority of, uh, their time is taking care of our green space within our community. And so there's a graph showing the mowing and the weed whipping of the city Parks and Grounds, and then the school district and also Hutchinson Utilities. Just to give an idea of where their hours kind of fall within the park side. Some of the things that changed a little bit with COVID this year, um, additional park restroom cleaning protocols with the restrictions and guidelines that were out there. Shelter avail- availability was by reservation only, and we did see a huge decline in the amount of shelters that were rented in 2020. Big part of capacity restrictions, um, the amount of people that you could gather with, and then also the nature of people not, um, having graduation, birthday parties, those type of things. They weren't gathering as families. So we saw a huge decrease in shelter, um, reservations. They were available, but again, by reservation only. With the unknowns of the campground, we usually open it right away in May, uh, but we didn't open until June 1st due to, um, again, the restrictions that came out. And then we also did block off five RV sites that were not allowed for reservations, um, throughout the whole summer just due to social distancing and the sharing of the electrical on those five sites. So, uh, the campground did really, really well. Um, people were camping and looking for spots. The campground was basically full all summer long, so it was a great asset to our department, uh, but it just looked a little different. Down at the campground, we did not have any river rentals, so no staff were hired for that, that piece of it. And then our seasonal crew for mowing and, um, landscaping was also cut in half for the year. And then just along the lines of our full-time Parks Maintenance Staff, we did hire two operators. One was a vacant position and the other one was a new position that was added. Just with the nature of what we do, we did see an increase in, um, park usage, trail usage in our campground. People were outside looking for things to do, so we did see a huge increase in our park visitors, which was great for us. And also with, um, the nature of what Parks and Natural Resources does, we were still able, um, to get a lot of our projects done that we had, uh, slotted for 2020 just because of being outside, so which is great. Um, so those are just the categories of which, of the different things we got done, but I'll just highlight a few, um, of those things. There was, um, new VMF outfield fencing that went in, a new playground at Lions West went in, um, due to a donation from the Lions. They were, the Parks Department was able to, um, refurbish about nine park benches with new wood and then also with new cement pads. During the winter season, there was an expansion to North Park and the ice skating rink due to social distancing requirements, but the warming house was not opened for that. And then there was, um, a couple Eagle Scout projects, and then there was some Hutchinson Leadership Institute projects on a much smaller scale this last year. Uh, we get a lot done in our Parks Department with our great volunteers that we have, and with the nature of what happened last year, they were about a quarter of what we usually have. So, but we still had some great volunteers that were able to get some projects done. And then, um, we added additional paver walkway by the police memorial on the loose line trail. So the Parks Department, um, still was able to get a lot of their big projects done for the year. Birch Arena, so in 2020, um, Birch Arena was greatly affected by COVID and the restrictions, but some good things did happen as well. Um, a new Zamboni was purchased. It was, um, moved up a year with the help of the Birch family donation, and they replaced the 2000 model that we currently had. So Buzz and Irv are our two Zambonis out at Birch Arena. All the LED lighting throughout the facility except over the sheets of ice were, um, replaced. Design work for the east rink roof and exterior side wall improvements, um, the design work was done, and the project is now, um, ready to go in spring of 2022. And then there were HVAC improvements and upgrades to the east rink. And then on the exterior, um, of the Birch Arena, the Slap Shot Sculpture was installed right as you walk into that east rink. Um, there was no summer ice in 2020 due to the restrictions, and then also no Parks Rec Community Ed or Hutchinson, um, Figure Skating Association Ice Show in 2020. They did a much smaller scale just for some parents, um, but there was no big show this year. And then also, um, greatly affected the Birch Arena was the six-week pause in youth sports or all sports, November to December. So it extended our ice time into the spring, which then affected some of our programming, uh, spring of 2021. But, um, they were still able to have a shorter season. And then currently, there's still a vacancy in our part-time facility maintenance technician position that's been vacant since August of 2020. Um, this is just a graph showing the ice time, um, over the last couple of years. I just wanted to note that, uh, with the restrictions and the pause, we had over a thousand less hours of ice time in 2020. And then not having that summer ice season took us down about 250 hours of summer ice that's usually available to our community to use. So the Recreation Center and the Aquatic Center, as you all know, in 2020, the Hutchinson Aquatic Center was closed, and we didn't offer any aquatics programming for the summer. But in that timeframe, um, with the shutdowns that happened with the rec center, the staff worked very diligently to get some upgrades done to the rec center. Um, so the picture there shows what it now looks like. If you all remember, it used to be the blue and white outside, which Birch Arena still looks like. Uh, but it got the new brick facade, exterior, a new exterior roof, new interior roof. Um, the gym got new LED lighting. The interior painting of the gym happened, um, from our, from our internal rec staff during the shutdown. And then there was some underground work and gutter and downspouts improvements. So good things happened to the, the bones and the exterior of our Recreation Center this year. Um, on the programming side, um, with May to July, uh, the rec staff was reassigned due to programs being put on hold. And a lot of our rec staff moved outside and helped the Parks Department fill that void of not hiring as many seasonal staff. So they spent a lot of time weeding, painting, staining, ball field maintenance, and, um, helping with the additional cleaning of the bathroom, bathroom reserve in our parks. So they were very busy in that time and then also doing those improvements to the rec center. We did see a, a large increase in pickleball. Um, when we could be indoors, we did not have our indoor playground at the rec center due to COVID restrictions, so we saw an influx of pickleball playing. So we did increase from four courts to six at the rec center. And then also with the new courts at Park Elementary, we saw a huge increase in outdoor pickleball participation with people wanting to be outside. Um, a lot of the summer programs were abbreviated with the COVID restraint, so we made a lot of modifications to make the program safe for the community, and then it was also just in a shorter season. And then also with, uh, the halt on some of the sports, uh, we were able to add an adult softball, uh, program with the availability of the fields. And then one thing I wanted to note, uh, there's a new federal law that wanted to play in 2020 for our, um, youth sports coaches, and we didn't really implement it in 2020, a little bit with our new coaches, and then, um, really in 2021, we hit the ground running. And that is a, uh, Safe Sport certification for all youth coaches. So it's a background check, concussion training, and then a Safe Sport training, um, for every coach that coaches in our youth programs. So just a graph to show, um, some of the youth participation. And then also I wanted to make a note, obviously, 2020 is a hard year to compare to other years with the restrictions, and then also people maybe just not feeling safe to come participate in programs yet. But our staff did work very diligent to, uh, make those accommodations and modifications to the, to still offer quality programs that, um, could keep everyone safe. Then here's just a graph of adult, uh, program participation, and in the annual report, we did show a comparison to 2010. Um, and there is high participation in all sports, and then 2020 again is a little tricky because it's less, less things were offered. But there is a, a decline in adult program participation throughout the years, so it kind of is illustrated in that graph. Another part of our program is, um, community education, and so that would be through, um, District 423. So they run a little bit different, um, in their fiscal year. They run school year July 1st to June 30th. Um, and Community Ed offers your own opportunities for, and resources to reach the needs of community members by providing instructional, educational, and engaging experiences. Um, and our Community Ed programs are tracking to be one of the highest in years, but due to the shutdown and restrictions, a lot of the programs were canceled. The Community Education Program Coordinator did go through a six-week layoff due to COVID from May to mid-June. And then, um, July to August programs did res- resume. Um, 23 camps and activities were offered and held within the COVID restrictions. And, um, and then also to note that, um, Community Education was in charge of the fall childcare at the, and was hosted at the Event Center through the district. So anyone that qualified for childcare, um, during hybrid and distance learning, the childcare was held at the Event Center through Community Ed. And then there's just a graph of the facility rentals. There's about 220,000 total participants, um, using district facilities from March to June 2020. Um, just a few other things that are, that fall under the Community Ed umbrella. Middle school level activities under the direct supervision of the Athletic Director, um, but Community Ed is the fiscal agent of that and, um, is a big part of, uh, middle school level activities. Passport to Parks was scheduled for 2020, but then was canceled due to the restrictions. And then Adult Basic Education is housed out of Ridgewater College, um, through a Great Glacial Lakes Consortium out of Wilmer. Uh, they were on hold all throughout, um, 2020, just until last month, they resumed some in-person learning for, um, Adult Basic Ed. And then Early Childhood Family Education is out of West Elementary. A little bit on the Event Center and Senior Center Adaptive Recreation. 2020 was tracking to be one of the highest volume of rentals in years for the Event Center. And then due to the COVID restrictions, 225 bookings were canceled, and then following the guidelines, 174 rentals were held. Um, one of the nice things about the Event Center, it was able to hold some smaller meetings because it was so large to, and to make sure that everyone could be socially distanced and far enough apart because there's some larger rooms there. So we were able to accommodate some larger or smaller events, but in a larger space. And then, um, starting March 16th, the Senior Center in Adaptive Rec Programming was canceled for the duration of 2020. Um, so, and that just resumed here in, uh, 2021. And then, as I noted before, the Event Center was the location for the district's childcare, um, during the fall. So there was about 60 kids, grades K through 5. And then, um, at the time when shelter in place and all the guidelines were in, staff spent a lot of time diligently cleaning, organizing, and updating the facility as they could. Um, a lot of things that they couldn't typically do in a normal year, some of the cleaning, they were able to get done. Any questions? And then I do have an update on the Aquatic Center, but I'll take questions on this one first.
Yeah, Lynn, I have a question. Um, are they with the lifting of restrictions now? Are those campsites going to be reopened now?
Yes. So we, um, are going to open those five additional campsites, and it's going to be May 21st, um, just to give park staff some time to get those up and ready again, but they will be, um, open for reservations. And I know a couple of people have already gone online and swooped them up, so they'll go fast.
So Lynn, I know you were talking about the Event Center. They cleaned and stuff. And I know that some of the gals at the Rec Center actually got transferred out to Parks Department, so they were helping with that, correct?
Correct, yeah. A lot of our rec staff were relocated, and they spent time cleaning and weeding and painting and all sorts of things during that time.
Any other questions for Lynn? Otherwise, we can move on to the Aquatics Center.
Okay, so a little bit of an update. I have some pictures, but so we did put out our summer brochure with what our plan was for the Aquatics Center. And then as of last week, with the Governor's new executive order, everything has now changed. As of May 7, all restrictions for outdoor pools have been lifted, so that means capacity, distancing, and all those things are now gone. So these are just two pictures of them filling up the pool last week. The pool is now filled, completely filled, and the filters have been turned on. Everything's in working order, which is great. I know staff were a little concerned with it sitting stagnant for a whole year, what it would be like when we turn all those pumps and everything on. But everything works, and we should be ready to roll on our opening date, which is June 5. But the pool is now completely full, and things are running. But just an update on some of those things that we had put out. So everything that was listed in the summer brochure is now wrong. We just put out a new aquatics page, so if you have the old one, just rip that page out because it's wrong. But we just put it out on the website, on social media, and we also have copies if anyone would want a copy of it, and we can share it with anyone that would like it. Updated as of May 10. Beginning May 17, we will be selling season passes for the community, so you can purchase those either online or at the Rec Center. And just note, the parking lot is being fixed right now, so you can enter either door, but you can't park in the parking lot. We've had a lot of people call thinking we were closed, but we are open. So come on in and purchase your Aquatics Center season pass. We're also offering discount tickets. If you don't want to buy a season pass, you can buy 10 times that you can come for $60, so it does take down the cost of coming to the Aquatics Center. But else, everything is resumed as it was in 2019. All the rates are the same, all the times are now the same. So daily swim will be 12:30 to 7:00 PM for open swim. Fitness time will be 5:30 AM to 9:00 AM. You don't have to sign up online anymore. And then you still will have to wear a mask when you enter inside to get through admissions and go outside. But once you're on the pool deck, you're good to go, and we don't have any of those capacity restrictions anymore. One thing I do want to note, we still have our preparedness plan for our staff to keep our staff safe and keep everyone on our team safe, so our admissions, our concessions, and our lifeguards. And there is still a possibility that we might have to put a pause on either a couple days if staff would be quarantined or anything like that. There is a chance that, you know, we might not be open for a day or two or a week, or we might have some amenities that need to be shut down. So if we don't have enough staff, we might have to make the choice of closing the slides down for a day or one of the pools down. We are still in need of staff, and we still have to keep our staff safe. And if something would happen and they'd be quarantined or out, we still need to keep all of our patrons safe, so it may look a little bit different in that aspect. So the season passes are there, but if you need, something happens.
Sorry, you're good. So just keep going.
Oh, keep going, okay. The season passes are still there, and we'll try to remain open as much as we can. It's just a matter of if something would happen with our staffing, that we would be restricted to how many staff we have in a day, that we might need to make some accommodations with our pool. But we're hoping to be open every day just as normal as we can. We would close down amenities before we would close down the whole pool for the summer, but it's just going to depend on our staff and making sure they're safe. But we will have all those protocols and safety guidelines in place for them to keep them safe as well. But we are in need of more staff, so if you know anyone that wants to be a lifeguard, we're willing to train them. So give us a call, and we'll get you a summer job being a lifeguard. And then swim lessons, I know that was another big thing that was really needed. And we did open our registration on Monday, and they are basically now full. So we are waiting to see on staffing measures and then hoping to open some more as well. The indoor pool restrictions are lifted as of May 28. There's some guidance on indoor pools still until then, but after that, the restrictions are lifted as well, too. I don't know if anyone has any questions on the Aquatics Center?
So Lynn, maybe just fill in, just so the councils are aware. We generally employ about 70 to 80 people at our Aquatics Center, and as of two weeks ago, we were at 40?
We are now at 50.
Fifty.
So we're slowly creeping up. But yes, we were hoping even to have more this year, just with our reservations about if a staff would be quarantined or those type of things. But we are hoping to have more than normal, but we're at about 50.
So I think that's important for both the public and the council to be aware of. If we do run into staffing issues, that is going to impact our availability to be open to the public.
Lynn, how do they apply for lifeguards? Do you have a phone number, or can they just come out to the Rec Center? What can they do?
They can come right to the Rec Center. We'll give them an application. They can fill it out online. They can give us a call, even if they're not certified yet and they're willing to be certified or looking for a job. Have them give us a call, and we'll get them in touch with Maggie, our Aquatics Center manager, and she's willing to train some staff to get some more in for us. But she's been working very diligently to find those staff, so we have enough when we want to open.
And what would be that phone number?
Oh, man. It's a good question.
The Rec Center is 587-2975.
Thanks, Chad. I only give everybody my number, not the actual Rec Center number.
Lynn, I missed it. Did you say that they're going to open some slots up for the first swimming lessons? Like Betsy registered her bet on Monday, and I think she got on, and it was filled up by 6:05, so.
Yes, so we are looking at it right now. We had brought our numbers down due to the social distancing requirements of indoor pools, and so a lot of our classes are a lot smaller just because of those restrictions. And there's a lot of wait lists right now. So as soon as we get the go-ahead from our aquatics manager and our gal that schedules our swim lessons, we're going to bump those classes up. We'll start right away with the wait list for the people that are on there, and we'll get them in spots that can fit their needs.
Perfect, thank you. It's nice that things are opening up, but we had all that great discussion at the Parks Board and had this all figured out, and then we just threw the plan in the garbage. So that's the way it goes.
Yes, our staff worked really hard to come up with a great plan to keep everyone safe and still have a fun summer, and now we can just throw that away.
Oh, Lynn, it's Mary. I think you guys are going to have a wonderful summer, and you're going to be busy, busy. So let's just hope that that all comes to fruition, and all your hard work will be all for the good.
Yes.
All right, anything else for Lynn?
Lynn, this is Brandon. Is, it's great news. The thing, so I had a couple of people ask me at church, and I don't really know much about it, to be honest, but the pre-hour, like, fitness swim hours or whatever, is that functioning as normal as well without limitation or?
Good question, yes, because that was a big concern. We have a lot of fitness goers that come to our fitness swim. And with the restrictions we had previous, we had to do it in hour time slots, and you had to preregister. But those are all gone now, and you don't have to preregister anymore. We don't have to track anything or have anyone do signup genius to come. And so that fitness time, it will function normally, 5:30 to 9:00 AM, and they can come for as little or as long as they want to.
That's fantastic. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lynn.
All righty, we'll jump back up. Public hearing issuing non-on-sale intoxicating liquor license to Flank Steakhouse LLC located at 14 Main Street South.
Mayor and Council, this is one of those things Mark and I didn't talk about on who was going to take it. So I think Mark's going to introduce it to the council and the public.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. As Matt alluded to, this is a public hearing in response to an application that we got for an on-sale intoxicating liquor license submitted by Amanda Merritt on behalf of her corporation, Flank Steakhouse LLC. Included in the packet was the application materials and also a diagram of where they would be serving alcohol outside adjacent to the building. That would be considered part of the licensed premises for alcohol service. I had an opportunity to speak to the police chief earlier about this. There were no problems with their background check. Everything seems to be in order. They did submit the required proof of insurance, so I don't think there's any impediment for the issuance of the license. But obviously, this is a public hearing, and there might be some input from the public that may want to consider as well.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, if you didn't have any questions for Mark or myself, we'd ask that you would entertain opening the public hearing.
We'll open the public hearing for public comments.
There is nobody within the building to bring forth any public comments.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary, to close the public hearing. Roll call. Mary?
Aye.
Brandon?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Intertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the license.
Okay. Motion by Chad, second by Brandon, to approve the license. Roll call. Mary?
Aye.
Brandon?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
We have a second public hearing. Resolution number 153009, resolution giving primary approval for the issuance of the City General Obligation Capital Improvement Plan Bonds in an amount not exceeding 16 million and adopting a capital improvement plan for CIP bonds in 2021 through 2025.
Mr. Mayor, I'll hand it over to Finance Director Andy Reed. He'll introduce this, and I know we've got Nick Anhut here as well.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, council members. Yeah, the purpose of tonight's public hearing is to discuss the financing option that we've identified for financing the new police facility. Nick Anhut, as Matt mentioned, is with us tonight, and he'll walk through some information with you. And as you know, Nick, who's with Ellers Public Finance Advisors, he's helped us for several years with our bonded debt, and he does a great job for us. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Nick, and he'll go through his info, and then we'll have time for questions.
Thank you, Andy. Mr. Mayor, council members, Nick Anhut with Ellers and Associates, and I'm going to share a very brief presentation with you to give some background on the proceedings on holding a public hearing for the issuance of what are called capital improvement bonds to be issued by the city. If you bear with me a moment here, I'm going to just make sure that I get this set up appropriately. So the purpose of this public hearing is to go through steps involved in the ability to issue general obligation bonds to finance essential purpose facilities. As the council is well aware, their authority to issue bonds rests not only within the city charter, but also within state statutes. The statutes define the type of projects that you can engage in bonding for, and they do delineate certain processes for separate qualifying projects. When a city is considering bonding for things such as a city hall, a police facility, or even a public works facility, there is a process called capital improvement bonding. It is within Chapter 475, Section 521 of the statutes. And it requires that the council, in order to gain the authority to issue bonds, goes through a public hearing process. That process involves providing a public notice of the intent and public hearing at least 14 days prior to the hearing itself. Holding an actual public hearing, which we are here to do today, in that hearing, there is discussed a five-year capital improvement plan that identifies any bonding needs associated with this statute over that time period. And then last, there is a 30-day reverse referendum period, essentially a period where the public may petition to put the authority to issue bonds on a future referendum. That is a 30-day period that starts after this public hearing process. So a document was prepared and is part of the city's records to identify the potential bonding and projects to be funded under these proceedings. It calls for up to $16 million worth of funding for the city's police facility project. That is the lone project that is contemplated in this capital improvement plan, as it is the only one that is anticipated to require bonding as far as any facility needs over the next period of time from '21 through 2025. It's anticipated that construction on this project is going to start this year, and it will carry forward through next year. And as I mentioned, no other facility projects are contemplated, at least projects that are anticipated for bonding purposes under this statutory provision. The statute requires that in its document, needs to consider eight factors in the issuance of the bonds. Those factors are the conditions of the city's existing infrastructure for the specific improvement itself, in this case, the police facility, the local demand for the facility improvement, the costs, the available public resources to fund the project, the level of overlapping debt within the city. And overlapping means all jurisdictions that have taxing authority over property within the city, so that would include the school district as well as McLeod County. It also identifies the costs and benefits of any alternative use for the funds that are anticipated to pay back the bonding, the operating costs of the facility improvements, and then whether or not there's any alternatives for providing public safety services more efficiently through potentially sharing facilities or combining uses within the facility. And so there are several of these that have been identified within that document, and obviously, as you've gone through your consideration of the project itself, there are a myriad of these factors that have come to your decision-making. So we don't anticipate that there are any concerns, but that document does, I checked the box, it does identify all of the proceedings under that qualification. The anticipated bond issues are also included within the document. We do, we are setting the bar high as far as the amount potentially to fund the project. The estimated cost of the project is 16 million. The city may use some other funds that it has on hand, some reserves that have been set aside to potentially lower the bonding necessary, but for purposes of these proceedings, we are anticipating that bonds would finance the full 16 million. Those bonds can be issued all at once, or they can be spread out over a period of time to match the construction of the project. In discussion with finance staff, we think that it is best if the issue is split into two pieces. One, to cover the costs of construction throughout the period of 2021, and then a second issue to essentially clean up the final amount of financing necessary at the completion of the project that is anticipated next year in 2022. Splitting it up will allow us to not accrue as much interest. If we issued all of the bonds at once, the If we issued all of the bonds at once, the interest would start accruing as soon as we closed on that financing, and this will allow us to delay some of that and then fine-tune the amount of borrowing necessary for the project instead of bonding for it all upfront before all of those costs are known. We also are anticipating that the bonds that are issued this year will be bundled together with other bonding needs within the city for your other 2021 street reconstruction and similar projects for the utilities. The bond document includes estimates for the potential debt service. That debt service is going to be repaid from a dedicated property tax levy. That will be a new levy imposed on the city. It would take effect as early as your next budget cycle, so next year in 2022. The document contemplates both a twenty-five and a thirty-year term of repayment. That decision is not being made tonight. It would be made at the time the bonds are issued, but we wanted to make sure that we included both as they are being considered by staff, and we would come forward to you with a more fine-tuned approach at the time those bonds are needed to construct the project. But for purposes of this document, we anticipate that the maximum annual debt service, using some conservative estimates for interest rates, is just over eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. That would be subject to the twenty-five-year repayment term. If we were to stretch out that repayment just a little bit longer for thirty years, we anticipate that the annual debt service would be seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars per year. The rates we are anticipating are fairly low relative to past market interactions, 2.33% on a twenty-five-year term and 2.51% on a thirty-year term. However, these rates are actually fairly conservative, given some of the recent events, the pandemic, and actions by the Federal Reserve to try to keep rates low over the course of the last year as part of the economic recovery. You know, if we price these bonds today, we do think that the initial financing would potentially be as low as 2%, but we have bumped those estimates up to be conservative for, again, for these proceedings. The council should be aware that there are two limitations when it comes to this particular statute and the amount of bonds that can be issued to finance facility projects. The first is that these bonds will count against the statutory debt limit that is imposed on municipalities in the state. That debt limit is tied to the property tax base or the estimated market value of property within the city, which is, the limit is 3%. That equates to about thirty-three million in capacity that the city has on hand. So assuming that we borrow the full sixteen million to fund this project, that would still leave about seventeen million dollars worth of capacity that the city could use for other bonding purposes in the future, so just under half of the capacity available. Second limitation is on the amount that can be paid for annually for debt service. The bonding statute actually limits that, again, to a percentage of market value, 0.16%. That equates to about 1.7 million dollars worth of annual capacity to fund debt service related to CIP bonds. These bonds, again, we anticipated at the twenty-five-year amortization would be about eight hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars in annual debt service, so that would leave over nine hundred thousand dollars of capacity available should the council need to fund additional CIP projects in the future. So ample amount of capacity there. We do not believe that these limitations pose any risk to you in the short term, and certainly, as these bonds are paid off, those limits, those capacities would increase back to the full level. So as far as the proceedings are concerned, the council is being asked to hold a public hearing to allow for any public comments and address any questions. Once that hearing is closed, there is a resolution for the council to consider adopting the CIP document and authorizing up to sixteen million dollars worth of general obligation CIP bonds to fund the project identified in that document, the police facility. After that resolution is adopted, that would start a thirty-day petition period, the reverse referendum I mentioned earlier. That period allows for the public to come forward to petition to put the bonds on a future ballot, subject to a referendum. That petition needs to be signed by voters that are equal to at least 5% of the votes cast in the last general election, and if they do come forward, they could put the matter on a future ballot, subject to the council's approval. To do so, that period, that thirty-day period, assuming the resolution is adopted this evening, would end on June 10th, and at that point, if no petition is received, the council would then have the authority to execute up to sixteen million dollars worth of financing for this project. Again, we anticipate that would occur in a two different series of bonds, one issued this summer, and the second one issued potentially as early as the spring of 2022. So that concludes my remarks. Be happy to stand by for the public hearing and any questions of the council as they consider the resolution. Thank you.
Mary? Oh, go ahead, Matt.
Just a couple of things to note. It's kind of anticipated, at least we're anticipating in the front end, that we would be using all sixteen million. Just I want to make sure that's out there to the council, but we are trying to be conservative and bring it forward, this request tonight. We'd ask the council that you would open the public hearing for any public comment. Once the public hearing is done, then obviously take action to close it, and then you'd be looking to adopt a resolution.
All right, we'll open the public hearing for public comment.
Nobody's running up here for it, so. There's nobody here to give any public comment.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Brandon to close the public hearing. Roll call, Mary?
Aye.
Brandon?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 15309. Not to exceed sixteen million.
I will second that motion. Roll call, Mary?
Aye.
Brandon?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Andy. Thanks, Nick.
Thank you all. Good to see you.
All right, moving on to unfinished business, second reading and adoption of ordinance number 21-821, franchise agreement with Arts Place.
Here in council, City Attorney Mark Saporro will present this to you.
Hello again, Mayor and council. As Matt alluded to, this is the second reading for the franchise agreement for the Arts Place facility located over on Franklin Street. We had the public hearing at the last meeting concerning the franchise agreement. No changes have been made as a result of that hearing. Staff feels that it should be approved, and I'd ask for the council's approval as well.
Make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Brandon to approve ordinance number 21-821. Roll call, Mary?
Aye.
Brandon?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
We have second reading and adoption of ordinance 21-822, an ordinance amending section 154.024 and section 154.116 of the city code regarding encroachment and construction of maintenance of parking lots.
Mayor and council, we've got Plan Zine Director Dan Jokum with us to, I guess, to reintroduce the second reading of this ordinance.
Good evening. As we went over at the last city council meeting, I have a couple ordinance amendments for you to consider. As was noted, one is relative to parking lot and requirements for paving and curb and gutter, and the other one is relative to easements near stormwater ponds. We haven't received any other public comment on this since the last city council meeting. So at this point, unless there's any questions, I would recommend approval of both these ordinances.
And make a motion to approve both of them.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve both ordinances. Roll call, Mary?
Aye.
Brandon?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Moving on, new business, establishing staffing levels and public window hours at the new police facility.
Good evening, Mayor and council. You should have received a copy of this in your packet, but essentially, with the design of the new police station, the communication center has been eliminated. So at previous meeting, you guys approved the severance packages for our communication staff. However, we do have a need to retain some of that staff to complete some of the ancillary duties that they do currently, and so I provided you with three separate options. If you like, I can go through those. My hope is that you would have read them prior to the meeting, and so really, I would just field any questions you might have regarding any one of those three options. My recommendation is that you approve the first option, which authorizes us to reassign two of our communication personnel to police administrative specialists to continue to complete those duties, and then also would allow lobby hours, sixteen hours of lobby hours per day, and then with no weekend hours. As I noted in the options, the only drawback to that option is that any sick time or short-term time off request would require overtime to cover the shift. So I guess I'll field your questions if you have any. Otherwise, I would recommend, I would ask that you approve option one.
So Tom, maybe if you could, at least for the council and for the public, explain the new feature that's going to be built into the new facility for when we may not have somebody at that front.
Sure, absolutely. I don't know what the proper terminology is for it, but what we're calling it is a panic room, essentially. So during the time that our lobby hours will be closed, the public would still be able to gain access into the foyer, essentially, and off of that small room would be another room that person who is experiencing emergency or is fearful for their safety can go into that room, lock the door behind them, and then contact dispatch, which would at that point be in Glencoe, and then they could assign an officer to come meet with them. If there happened to be staff at the PD at that time, obviously, that would speed that process up, but it wouldn't be a safe haven for anybody who happens to be in danger at that point. So although we won't have twenty-four-hour lobby, we have taken, I think, the appropriate steps to ensure that anybody coming to the police department for that reason would still be safe.
I'd make a motion to approve option one.
I'll second that motion. Motion by Chad, second by myself to approve option one. Roll call, Mary?
Aye.
Brandon?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thanks, Chief Gifferson.
Thank you.
Resolution number 15310, resolution accepting bids and awarding contract for wastewater treatment facility headworks improvements project, letting number three, project number
Kent? Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and council. Yeah, like the mayor just mentioned, we have in front of you a resolution accepting bids on our wastewater treatment facility headworks improvement project. We've spoken quite a bit about this over the last several months. We finally got it out for bids. We did pre-approve three bidders through our bidder qualification process. In the end, one of those bidders elected not to bid on the project, but we did receive two bids from two well-respected contractors in the industry. Like is mentioned in the packet, the bids, both of them for that matter, were below the engineer's final estimate, with the low bid being approximately fifteen percent than the final estimate. So with that, we recommend awarding this project, and staff and the consultant are looking forward to getting this project moving along as soon as possible.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second that.
Motion by Chad, second by Brandon to approve Resolution number 15310. Roll call, Mary?
Aye.
Brandon?
Aye.
Dave? Dave, you left us.
Technical difficulties, aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Engineering services agreement with neuroengineering for wastewater treatment facility headworks improvement project. Kent again.
Yes, like is mentioned in the packet, and obviously relative to the previous item on the headworks front, we're recommending that we enter into an engineering services agreement with neuroengineering. Obviously, they were the technical consultant, the lead design consultant for the city on the development of the headworks plans and specifications. We've worked with Nero on several projects over the recent years. With that, there's a very detailed proposal and task hour budget included in your packet that outlines what their role would be throughout the construction phase of this project, and we recommend entering into this agreement. And I guess if there's any specific questions, Tim Gradke, wastewater supervisor, is also here this evening, who's been working with Nero to develop this proposal. I'd just like to make one comment. This is a very unique project that has a variety of technical aspects, and the, there's a somewhat of a, I guess, a little bit of risk, I should say, due to the nature of how this project is being delivered under flow within, you know, the confines of the wastewater treatment. within, you know, the confines of the wastewater treatment facility. So basically, in a nutshell, it would be Nero's job to work with the contractor on a day-to-day basis to understand how they're constructing the project to meet the plans and specifications. But not only to accomplish that, but to ensure that our day-to-day wastewater treatment operations and responsibilities won't be negatively impact and risk putting our P C A permit requirements in jeopardy. And so that basically allows, you know, staff to concentrate what they do day in, day out on the wastewater treatment front and sets up Nero to deliver this project over the course of fifteen to eighteen months.
I'll make a motion to approve hearing services with Nero.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mary, second by Dave to approve. Roll call, Mary.
Hi.
Brandon.
Hi.
Dave.
Hi.
Chad.
Hi.
Hi, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kent. Chad, I can tell you're smiling on this one already. Setting budget workshop for May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one at four P M.
To everybody's excitement, we are entering into budget season already. So this is our annual kick budget kickoff workshop. That's for the council to consider that on prior to our next council meeting at four o'clock.
I'll make a motion to set that meeting.
Second.
Here you are, mute.
I look down. Okay, motion by Chad, second by Brandon to approve workshop for May twenty-fifth, four P M. Roll call, Mary.
Hi.
Brandon.
Hi.
Dave.
Hi.
Chad.
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. We have the library board minutes from March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one. Is, who do we have there? We still have Kim. Does Kim have anything for us, Matt?
I guess he does, yes.
Oh, okay, Tim.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to follow Lynn's comments earlier about seasonal staffing. She kind of had a shameless plug there on T V and to you guys. So as can be expected, most years with the seasonal application, not many people or youngsters want to check the water wastewater box to come help us out. So I think they're a little apprehensive of what they might be put into doing. Let it be known, we're not going to get them into anything that we know they can't handle or would put them into danger. So we are also looking for a little bit of a higher-than-entry-level position, which is kind of a environmental intern, we call it, for public works. And so this would work mainly with water, wastewater and sewer watered or, sorry, stormwater operations and would be mainly housed at the wastewater plant, but could be doing a lot of laboratory work, sampling for us and laboratory testing and getting results. Some data entry, possibly going through some S O Ps. Some of the stuff they do for stormwater would be helping to maintain ponds, doing some testing, maybe going out in a canoe or boat and and doing some various testing with that. So what we look for in that position is somebody possibly graduating high school and looking to go into college, maybe with an interest in biology or environmental sciences, or somebody returning for the summer that's already begun their studies in in college in a higher education. So if you're a first or second year, third year, returning from college, we'd love to have you if you have an interest in that and looks good on the resume. We have you for forty hours a week or as much as you like and accommodate. So if anybody is interested out there, we'd like you to either call us at the wastewater treatment plant or go online and fill out a seasonal application and put that you want to be an environmental intern with water and wastewater. So thank you for allowing me to put that shameless plug in.
All right, thanks, Tim. Is John still there? John Olson?
Nope, you've got Kent or Tom or Lynn.
Does Chief Gifferson have anything else for us?
Looks like he's got one other thing.
Hello again. First and foremost, just want to, again, thank you for the support that you demonstrated again this evening. Not everybody is as lucky as our police department, and just wanted to let you know that we don't take that lightly. So again, thank you for that. Also, just so you're aware, if questions are starting to come up regarding mask mandate, that type of thing, especially along with the, as it concerns special events over the summer. Obviously, July one, Governor said the mask mandate is over, if not before. But we obviously have some special events that are coming up in the city before July one. And so if you're being asked, if people are asking me, we're having those conversations with those organizations that are sponsoring those events and just making sure that they have a plan to enforce, or at least they need to be able to tell us that they have a plan to enforce any mask mandate that still may be in effect. And then an idea of how they're going to enforce it. So it's out there. I just wanted to make a public comment on that, so the public is aware that that is taking place as well. And I guess that's about it. So I I'll open the, if you guys have any questions regarding that, be more than happy to answer if I could.
Tom, have you been getting any calls on people not wearing masks in in some of the stores and stuff, or has that kind of calmed down?
We haven't received really any calls recently regarding that. And again, I think my concern is more for some of the larger special events that are going to be occurring and just how that's going to be accomplished. Again, if it's still in effect, my hope is that, especially by the time the water carnival rolls around, that mask mandate is no longer in effect.
Tom, the big one I've gotten asked at the store is the parade, like, under the current restrictions, can they have the parade?
They can have the parade, but mask mandates would be, so all the restrictions come the twenty-eighth are gone, with the exception of a mask mandate. So they can have the parade, but they have to have a plan in place for how they're going to enforce the mask mandate. Asking the police department to enforce it for them is not a viable option.
Sure, so with a couple thousand people that are along the parade route, the expectation is that they're to wear masks or?
As it stands now, yes, that would be the expectation. And again, I'm hoping by that time, it's no longer in effect. The governor promised.
If it's still on, that sounds fun to enforce.
That's why I said I'm not doing it. Any other questions?
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Does Lynn want to come up and give one more pitch for getting help this summer? Matt?
She says she's good, so.
Okay. All righty, Kent, what do you have for us tonight?
Good.
He says he's good, too.
Oh, my gosh. Well, then Mark has to have something for us, Tony?
Surprisingly, no, he doesn't, so.
Oh, darn. Oh, well. All righty, Dave, do you have anything for us?
You're on mute, Dave, so.
Thank you for that. No, I don't have anything to add. I see there's turkeys running up and down the street, so. Which is, I don't take a derogatory thing, but I do caution that people be careful when they're driving because I saw a bumper or a gorilla taken out by a bird. So just be cautious, I guess, as well as of the children that are on the streets these these days, too, many of them. So people out walking and whatnot, so that's it.
Thanks, Dave. Brandon, you have anything for?
No, I'm just as anxious to get off of here as anyone else and enjoy this perfect day. I'm ready to go play. Beautiful.
Okay, Mary.
I second Brandon, and I have nothing.
Chad.
I will not add anything more tonight either, so have a good night, everybody.
I think everybody wants to go outside and play. Matt, what do you have?
I want to go outside and play, too, so I don't have anything for you guys tonight either, so.
All right. All right, well, actually, I do have something, you know, the poppy, poppy days are coming up with the auxiliary, so they'll be out doing poppies for the veterans. So actually, they dropped some off, so I will give these up to Matt. So Matt, you can hand them out to the to the staff. With that, I want to go outside and play, too, so.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by Chad to adjourn. Roll call, Mary.
Hi.
Brandon.
Hi.
Dave.
Hi.
Chad.
Hi.
Hi, we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.